I'm now going to call the Town of Batavia Planning Board Meeting to order for Tuesday, April 6th. Because of the coronavirus pandemic and state and federal bans on large meetings, this meeting will be held electronically via Zoom video conference call instead of a public meeting, open for people to attend. Minutes of meeting will be posted at the Town of Batavia website. Everyone's on so they have the meeting numbers. Kim, would you call, roll call please?
Sure. Paul Marchese.
Here.
Paul McCollum.
Here.
Lou Paganello. Don Partridge.
Here.
Jeremy Lyles.
Yeah.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner. Brooks Holly.
Here.
All set.
Okay, thank you. Brooks will be voting tonight in place of Lou Paganello. Did everyone look at the minutes? We just got them, but we worked, uh, Kim worked really hard.
Kathy, I only sent them to you and Dan in both seats.
They didn't forward it to everyone?
No.
That's okay, we'll put them on the next agenda for approval. ... tonight to talk about his, uh, his application to use recreational land for, uh, fitness training, general recreation, drive-in movie, shooting range, and we're asking him to review his plans today, and this is a chance for the board to ask him questions so we understand exactly what's going on. We've all read things that have been in the press, but I think it's good that we hear from Brandon. So, I'm going to turn this meeting over to you, Brandon.
Hello, everyone. Um, and yeah, thank you for, uh, allowing me to come in and talk about the plans that we have out there at, uh, the former Polar Wave property. So, yeah, as a lot of you know, uh, as we've outlined, we have, um, you know, what some could say quite ambitious goals out there. We, we have a lot that we would like to do with the property. We see a ton of potential out there for a, a multitude of uses that I think not only benefit, uh, the Town of Batavia, Genesee County, the local region, uh, the list goes on. So, uh, I can certainly outline some of the major, uh, projects that we'd like to start out with. Obviously, I think, uh, the one that most people are going to be the most familiar with is the shooting range, uh, and that side of the house. To give a little background on myself, uh, I own the Firing Pin, and we've been open since 2014 out in Bergen. That's a indoor shooting range, firearm store, training center, gunsmithing, we do, we do the whole work. So, I feel that we are, uh, definitely well-suited and well-qualified to, to run a, a outdoor facility such as this. We have the experience, we have the technical knowledge, we have the, the people in place with the proper training, we have all the, all the pieces there. So, I think that one, uh, on our side is, um, relatively simple. I'm sure that will be one of the more, uh, controversial or maybe have the most amount of questions asked, which is of course totally fine. But, uh, yeah, so that, that is obviously the prime, the prime, uh, uh, objective out there. Uh, but as you, as you mentioned, we have a, a list of others, including, uh, a drive-in movie, you know, that I think that the property, again, is just perfectly suited, uh, it's a very low, um, low impact as far as what you have to do to the, to the land. You know, most of it is already a parking lot, which is the, the main thing that you, you know, need to do to the land. Uh, the screen won't take up much room. The other components are relatively easy, uh, depends on just what level of interest, you know, we have in it, how, how large we scale it. Um, so again, that one's relatively easy. The RV, I, I think that's, I don't know where that is on everybody else's list, but, uh, we intend to have a small, very small RV park, uh, 15 to 20 RVs at the most. It would be, uh, what's considered dry camping, you know, there's not going to be full hookups, there's not going to be a septic system, there's not going to be, uh, anything like that. It would be just spaces for people to come, you know, maybe they're coming to one of our events, uh, or just passing through the area, uh, a place to park and hook up some electric, you know, maybe dump some garbage in a dumpster, things like that, very, very low-key. Um, another would be paintball. Again, the land, uh, it's 22 or so acres out there. The way the land is, is situated, could easily just run paintball out there, you know, with the board's approval ASAP, you know, very easy to set up, nothing we have to construct or, or build really, other than some fun, you know, um, like the blow-up barriers that, that people use for that, that type of activity. Uh, another larger, all-encompassing thing would just be a venue, venue space. So, again, it's, it's a wide-open field, basically, uh, and it would be perfect for someone who just wanted to do a car show or antique show, any type of event, you know, that you could host outside in, in fair weather. We want to be able to, to do that, as well as potentially have, uh, concerts, you know, nothing obviously at the scale of, of like a Darien Lake or a Seamack or anything like that, but, you know, some, some nice local, uh, entertainment, something like that. Uh, and, and we have some other ones, and I can keep going, or if we'd like to stop, uh, you know, we can, we can do whatever.
Well, I'll see what the board has to say. What kind of questions would you like to ask Mr. Lewis? Raise, raise your hand or just say you want to speak, and Sarah will let you.
Kathy?
Yes.
Um, one of the applicants on behalf of Mr. Lewis that's also here is Matthew Hume. If you see his hands raised up in the corner right now.
Oh yes, Matthew Hume.
He, he is also with, uh, Mr. Lewis and did represent and did the site plan and the site work out there, so I do know he has something that he would like to add.
Okay, I didn't know that. Uh, Sarah, Mr. Hume can speak next.
Thanks, Kathleen. Again, my name is Matthew Hume, architect. I've been working with Brandon on the development of the site plan. I just wanted to note that, um, Brandon has a lot of, uh, different things that he'd like to accomplish in purchasing this property. He sees a lot of potential in it. But these are not all things that he envisions happening overnight or all at once. Um, these are all things that he wanted to bring to everybody's attention up front, just so everybody's aware of the potential he sees in, in this area, but it's not, um, like we want to do all this at once. You, you know, each one of these things would warrant its own sort of permitting process and stuff like that, we understand that. So, um, we just wanted to make sure that we got everything out there on the table, everybody understood where we wanted to go, so we could, uh, address it now rather than, you know, hang, having any hang-ups down the road. So, I just wanted to mention that.
What do you look at being the first things to, to start?
Uh, you know, again, becau- because of, uh, how the land is situated, again, with, with board approval, uh, the shooting range could start immediately, certain areas of the property. The RV, you know, having someone come in and just park their RV would be very simple. Paintball, uh, would be extremely simple to get going, and we probably would try to get that going within, you know, this summer, uh, or relatively soon. Same with like the venue space, um, and there's a few other things, such as an athletic track in the back, that again, most, a, a lot of the things that we want to do don't require a building, construction, you know, uh, it, it's all very, um, I don't know the right, the right term to use, but...
Brandon and I have been saying that we, basically, he'd like to use the site almost as is.
Like, exactly, yeah.
Without getting into huge, you know, building processes, or it just doesn't need it for what he's looking to do out there for this recreation.
Yeah, we, we've already had letters and, and questions from people that live in the area, and their, their big concern is the shooting range. What kind, what kind of events are you talking about? How long would you expect them to last, and how often would you hold an event?
Sure, so, uh, I guess two different, um, you know, two different sides of the house there. So the shooting range, uh, would be one thing, uh, and we would of course have like shooting events, say competitions or, uh, whatever, you know, open houses, things like that. Uh, but the, the event side of it would be a whole nother, you know, I guess that would be up to, um, you know, we, we intend on operating almost just as like a venue. So if someone came and said, hey, I want to do a two-day car show, we would figure out what it would take, you know, to do, to do that. Um, so, yeah, as, as far as on the shooting side of things go, uh, you know, we, we hope to operate as a regular gun club would, uh, seven days, seven days a week.
Well, I live behind, or the, I have a gun club behind me, and they shoot Thursday night and Sunday morning, and that's it. And so the neighbors know that, and we're not, we're not bothered by it, because we understand that that's when they're going to shoot. Everyday shooting is quite a lot.
Sure, yeah, um, you know, most of the traditional gun clubs that, that you're familiar with in the area, uh, are primarily that. They are a, a trap and skeet club, uh, that has a, a night that they primarily do most of their shooting. Uh, I was a member of a, of a club in Oakfield, the Oakfield Rod and Gun Club, for many years. Uh, I think theirs was on a Tuesday or a Wednesday night, but the club was still open, uh, any day of the week for a member to come in and shoot, you know, generally, um, any hours that the club is open, uh, in an outdoor capacity, um, and, and, and shoot, you know, to their hearts' content. I don't know if the club that you're near, uh, people might not necessarily do that, uh, but that's very common, uh, at most gun clubs. Uh, if, if you're familiar, there's a club in Rush, New York called Rochester Brooks, and that's a club that I'd very much like to emulate, and it's a very, um, al- almost more of like a country club style of atmosphere, very safe, very professional, very nice facilities, well-maintained with a professional staff, uh, et cetera, you know, uh, something that we just don't really have in this area.
Okay, how about Planning Board members' questions?
Yeah, this is, uh, Brooks Holly. I just wanted to say, um, what kind of guns were you being allowed at the range? Do you have any specific guns that you have in mind, or is it everything, or just a couple of different ones?
Yeah, it would certainly be anything, uh, anything and everything that would be, uh, allowed, of course, uh, but one of our, our intentions is to have this utilized not only again by the local law enforcement agencies, but the facility that we will have here, uh, there's nothing like this, uh, in the region, really. So we hope to draw from a wide area, um, law enforcement and, and just from the average citizen that's interested in this type of activity. So, yeah, really all types of firearms.
Thank you. So you're, okay, uh, so you're saying you would like to have seven-day-a-week possible shooting, uh, during business hours, with somebody on staff there constantly?
So, we're going to have a mixed, uh, model of operation. Will be a, a private club, the shooting range will be a private club. So our intent is Monday through Friday during, during the work week, uh, it will only be open to members. And to be a member of the club, you'll have to take a very extensive safety class, you'll, you'll essentially become a NRA-certified safety officer yourself. So every club member will be a certified range safety officer, right, which is an extensive class, covers, covers a lot of information, uh, highly recognized, you know, the NRA at their, at their training level. So, Monday through Friday, now there will be staff there, of course, but it will not be at the same level as, uh, on the weekends. On Saturdays and Sundays, we intend to operate, much like how the Firing Pin is, you can come down just as a member of the public, you can go through a much quicker, uh, but still extensive safety briefing, get you up to speed, you're out on the range shooting. Uh, under those circumstances, there definitely would be range safety officers present, you know, right, you know, within arms' reach, monitoring everybody, keeping everybody safe. Uh, so we'll, we'll really have both, you know, during, during the week when you're a member, just like at every other gun club, uh, that exists, it'll be self-regulated, uh, with again, staff onsite, uh, primarily, uh, you know, working on other projects, of course, especially in the beginning, but as it grows, we'd love to have a pro shop onsite. I'm sure we'll have instructors onsite at all hours, uh, teaching classes, doing various activities. Um, I hope, I hope that answers your question.
So, one, one question. What, what are you considering your normal operating hours? I mean, is it going to be just nine to five, or, or dusk to dawn, or what, what, what are you looking at?
For sure, yeah, that's, that's a generally, you know, agreed-upon, uh, dusk to dawn is when most people, uh, target shoot. We would certainly be open to starting, uh, later in the day if that's, you know, something, uh, if that's a big concern of the neighbors, especially on the weekend, you know, nobody, you know, 7:00 AM in the, in the summertime is, is a little early, even if it is, uh, daylight out, you know. So if it's 9:00 AM, maybe if it's 10:00 AM start time, I think that'd be more than okay. And, yeah, you know, depending on the interest and the activities that we're doing, you're right, it would probably be, uh, dusk, especially obviously in the, in the winter months, it gets, you know, dark quite early. Uh, in the summer, we might push that back, maybe on certain nights, you know, like doing trap or skeet. A lot of people work until four or five, they couldn't come out until six, seven, eight o'clock, but we would for sure cut it off at obviously whatever time, uh, is required. Uh, with the caveat, I will say, another, um, huge training potential that we offer, especially to the law enforcement community, will, will be, um, night or low-level, low-light shooting, right? So again, this isn't something that will be out there every night blasting until two in the morning, uh, but it is definitely a needed, uh, skill set to practice, both on, on the regular civilian side and the law enforcement side, uh, low-light level and no light, you know, using a flashlight, using maybe a, a night, night vision assisted device, uh, things like that. So that would definitely be scheduled events, you know, we would do them maybe a couple times a month, you know, we put notice out, whatever's required, uh, for those.
Do you have some support from the law enforcement people?
Uh, I, uh, I think I mentioned it before, we don't have anything, you know, formal, we don't have anything in writing, obviously, but we have a very close relationship with, uh, a lot of members of various departments, again, both, you know, town, county, state level, both other counties, you know, all around the region, and it's something that if, if the department wouldn't send the guys here or wouldn't train there, these guys would be training here on their own, uh, privately. There's a huge, huge group of, of local law enforcement guys that that's, you know, that's their livelihood, their life, really, uh, and they take it very seriously, and they train independently of whatever their department does. So, I know it would be something very popular, again, just on the private use side. Uh, I think once we have the facility established and the, and the different agencies can see exactly what they can do here that they can't do on their home turf or their home ranges, I think we'll get a lot, a lot of official interest and partnerships developed.
Brandon, this is John Long. Heyo. Uh, I remember seeing a conceptual plan, um, that you brought to us, I think, a month ago, but whereabouts would the shooting range be and what, uh, you know, what safeguards are being implemented? Are you bringing in fill for like a backdrop, or is there, um, you know, timber ties or, or something like that? What's, what's the intent?
Yeah, so, uh, again, several different approaches in several different areas. Um, there's several bays, pistol bays that are on that map, uh, that are, are using the land, again, just naturally as it sits. As many of you remember, this, it was the Polar Wave Hill, um, which was brought in, you know, it was an artificially made, uh, hill that, uh, we will be enhancing with some ballistic rubber, which is what we use at the indoor range, uh, you're perfectly suitable to use it in the outdoor ranges as well, uh, which does several things. It's going to make it much safer, it increases our, our berm depth, it makes it a much more consistent, um, berm that you can shoot into instead of, you know, you might have a rock in like a natural, just a soil dirt berm, uh, and it makes it much easier to clean, which is another huge, um, concern of ours, is obviously the remediation and just keeping, keeping tabs on the lead, uh, and managing the properties that we're not hurting the environment, uh, in any way. So, in some locations, we'll have that, uh, you know, uh, right from the get-go. In other locations, towards the back of the property, again, just the, the way the land is situated already, uh, as long as we put, I would call them like stanchions in between different stations, uh, we can just use the land as it is. It's already 14 to 16 feet, uh, of a berm, which is, which is above, you know, what most berms are, around 12 feet. Uh, so, yeah, we will, we will definitely have, um, you know, and, and again, it's tough because there's, there's, there's not just one range, there's probably five, right? And it's, it's hard to, um, I guess, show them, it's, they're a very dynamic thing, it's not something that, you know, uh, there will be ranges, the ones that are on the map will be more fixed ranges. Again, when a member comes in, clear signage, like here's range number one, you're going to use range number one. Uh, some of these ranges though, we won't use unless we're having a, a competition or an event where everyone moves as a group, you know, to a certain station, we work a drill, uh, we move as a group to the next station and, and things like that. So, uh, we can certainly, um, you know, for the next, for the public hearing, we can certainly have a drawing that maybe illustrates those ranges exactly, uh, a little bit better. But, again, as part of this, we'd, we'd like, um, the ability to kind of stage them, uh, again, in a dynamic fashion, if we're setting up for a competition, you know, i- if we set a target here at this location, you know, this might not be in a, in a defined, uh, range on the property, but again, because of how the property is, it's entirely safe to shoot in this manner, you know, here we are, here's the target, here's the presentation of it, here's where you're going to shoot, uh, and we might only use it for that one single day, because it's a very specific task we're trying to perform, whether it's a distance or a, a, you know, the technique that you're using to shoot. Um, so, yeah, I know it's a very complex, um, answer to a complex question, but, uh, there you have it.
Yeah. Um, for us as a planning board, I think, uh, Brandon, you're going to have to have some defined lanes, meaning not necessarily lanes, like defined tasks you want us to put in an approval or disapproval. Um, we can't just give you a blanket, do whatever you want out there. Um, you're going to have to, to come back, especially your public hearing, with a definition of what you plan to do, where you plan to do it, and how you plan to do it. Because, uh, you know, from your, uh, your wide-scope events, I, I don't think we can, and, and I don't know that I would even feel comfortable with just giving you a cart blanch, um, approval on something that is not defined, especially for a special use permit. We have to have detailed definitions of times and dates and, and it's the same thing, the Area 51, that, you know, they, they have a, a schedule that every year comes in, yep, these are the dates we're approving for this. And, and mind you, a special use permit is reviewed. So, you know, it, it's almost sort of in stone, I guess I want to say. Maybe not such, but, you know what I mean, there's not a lot of latitude, just my helpful, you know. Um, I, I think it's an interesting concept. Um, I'm a little concerned about, you know, the continual firearm fire, it's pretty loud, especially if you're, if you're taking out any, uh, of the bigger weapons, you know, handgun fire is not as loud as your, uh, 50 caliber, uh, you know, uh, I'm just saying, it's just one of those kind of things where those are, and that's, I think one of the questions was asked, you know, what kind of weapons are you going to have out there? I mean, are they going to be, you know, 22s, two, you know, are they going to be 45s, 9mm, you know, are you going to, you're going to have the 50 caliber shootout day kind of thing? Because those things are loud, so, and I can put myself, if I lived out there, I can perfectly understand why, you know, uh, the neighbors would be concerned with seven-day-a-week shooter.
Yeah, that, this is the other, Paul, that's my concern too, is seven-day-a-week, um, you know, but, you know, six, eight, 10 hours a day of potential, you know, gunfire going on. Um, I know there's several people that are, you know, uh, having concerns with the noise coming from Area 51 of motorcycles going, you know, six hours at a crack, and now we're going to tack on, you know, gunfire for seven days a week, six, eight, 10, 12 hours at a time, and a potential for night-range shooting, which, that would be, I know for me, if there's going to be any potential of after-dusk shooting or low-light shooting, I would like to know exactly what days, what hours to inform the neighbors going, hey, on Thursday night, this is what's going to happen on the second Thursday of the month, so it's not surprise you're having a cookout, or you're having your kid's birthday party with, you know, a, a little movie out back, and all of a sudden you hear, you know, 12 guys firing off guns. It's the, it's the constant noise, I think that's going to be my issue with this whole thing.
Yeah, 100%, those are valid concerns and, and something that we definitely, with the range design, uh, as well as, as well as scheduling, because I, I agree with the night, the night shooting 100% as well. Those would be clearly defined, you know, generally a summertime activity, just because, you know, you have to be outside for, you know, several hours to do these types of events. Um, you know, it would be, you know, again, maybe coinciding with races that Area 51 does. So if he's racing till 11 o'clock at night, you know, we might be shooting, uh, out there doing a night shoot that same, that same night, so it, you know, we can, we can coordinate that way. But 100%, we would want to coordinate those, let people know, uh, and they would, that would certainly be a limited, you know, like I said, if we did those twice a month, I think that would be a lot. There, there's an appetite for it, but it's not huge, obviously. Uh, so, another thing, uh, like going back to the range design, so there's a lot that you can do, even though it's an outdoor range, there is a lot that you can do, uh, to try to keep the sound, you know, on the property as much as you can, obviously with different landscaping and, and, you know, physical, uh, sound barriers like that. Uh, as far as the long-distance ranges where you'd be shooting the, the bigger firearms, there's a, a very interesting technique, I can, I can show, uh, some pictures at the next, uh, meeting, uh, of using tires, using large tires, suspending them from an A-frame, uh, and you're almost making, um, a suppressor outside out of, out of tires, so that when you're in the shooting position, you put your firearm through there, you shoot, uh, and it, it knocks out a lot of the noise. I, I've been quite impressed, uh, by that. We'll have as well, uh, from various shooting positions, again, for shooting the larger-caliber firearms that are louder, uh, we'll essentially be shooting from inside of a structure, uh, with soundproofing material in there that'll help, help soak up a lot of that. Uh, and, uh, yeah, so we, we fully understand that noise will be a, a concern, and we want to do whatever we can, uh, to alleviate that. And, uh, you know, admittedly, I do think, again, this land, you know, if you were going to put a shooting range in, uh, I do think that we are in one of the, the best spots for it, not only, uh, Area 51, uh, being our neighbor, but our location so close to the throughway, you know, I've been, I've been on and near the property, uh, and, and the throughway, I believe, is definitely louder, uh, for the immediate, immediate neighbors, but...
Brandon, Don Partridge. Um, obviously, I think we're going to need to limit your hours in like weekdays versus weekends, and I'm just off the top of my head, I'm thinking weekends need to be like from 10 to 5, and weekdays maybe 9 to 5. I guess my question is, if we go into that route, we're limiting your hours, how many times a month would you need, uh, say to dusk, you know, twice a month? Um, I could see allowing it, say during the weekdays, that, you know, we're going to go to dusk, uh, twice a month or once a month, but I think that does have to be spelled out in your permit, and I would, I would like your input on it.
Yeah, 100%, you know, that, that's obviously the, the, the nature of the, of this, of the special use permit is, you know, we will work together, uh, to figure out what works, you know, for everybody. So, yeah, we could certainly, especially for the, the after-hours, we'll call them, or the later-night shoots, we could certainly get a, a list of dates together, present them, you know, do these dates with these times work, uh, and, and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
I, I hope you realize that right across the throughway are two mobile home parks that have retirees and young families. They don't stay up till 2:00 in the morning, they, they want to go to bed earlier. They don't stay up till two in the morning, they, they wanna go to bed earlier, so I think that the later hours will be very difficult.
If I may, what, what are the hours that, um, that area fifty-one, I don't, I don't know, I think eleven he goes till?
Um, I can't, I won't say without having it in front of me, I'll let you know, I'll get back to you.
Sure, sure.
Uh, Steve Tanner, a planning board member, just a quick question regarding seeker on this project. Uh, and it may even be more, uh, for Dan Lang than it is for you, Brandon, but with regards to seeker, it sounds, it sounds like we have multiple uses on this property. And in order to do seeker, and, you know, to get this done right, I think you have to do the entire project as, as part of the seeker review, so that we're not segmenting. Um, so all those uses would probably have to be on the site plan, and all those uses would have to be reviewed. Um, and the concern is, is that, you know, there might be, specifically the gun range use that maybe has to have a little bit more of a deeper look than a lot of your other uses, which are a little bit more benign. Um, so I guess the question, Dan, is, is if, if we knew we could, you know, get the, you know, more benign projects through, uh, to get things up and running, would we be able to do seeker on those items separately from seeker on, uh, the gun range?
Dan Lang here, I can, um, I'll address the same, and I know Brandon received a letter from the engineering department, um, which Kathy was copied, I was copied it on as well. Um, Steve did recognize on there, and I would agree, the project's gonna be listed as a type-one action for the coordinated review for the fact of the full stuff of the project. I was asked as well if this would be better off segmenting or more or less going through phase by phase, because we knew that the proposal was not going to be just one thing down the road, we wanted to do more. Brandon has, has mentioned that to me, Matt Hume has mentioned that to me on several occasions during discussion. But we can't really, we're, we're not legally allowed to segment a seeker out and separate the, the portions of the project if we know something's gonna come. Um, I think since the initial onset in our first meeting, when looking at this for outdoor recreation, which is a permitted use with a special use permit, we, we knew what it was all going to be. Um, Brandon has, has given us the site plan showing where everything was gonna be, but it would fall under a part-one long-form seeker, and it's probably going to lead into the questions in the full EAF. Or a, a, a full, full environmental impact review because of the amount of everything going on, more specifically to the range than anything else. Um, with that said, though, it is, i- i- it isn't allowed use, and our comprehensive plan does call that area out for outdoor recreation, that's what this would fall under. Um, we also, I did contact Andrew Meyer, our town attorney, we sent some questions over to him, because we do have gun ranges, we've got private clubs that are already existing in our community. Um, I think the difference is, is, I guess, if there was to be the night shooting and everything else, um, that's something that's gonna have to be discussed by the planning board and, and to your leisure, how we wanna do this with a special use permit. But there's a significant list that Steve Mountain put together on this. We obviously, we've, we've had complaints on it. We've also had, and I, we can all look, we've also seen a lot of positive feedback on it as well. So we've got a mix of, a little bit of both on there. Um, I know, me for one, I look at trying to find the, the happy medium, let it fit the town of Batavia, but we also wanna do what's best for the residents and everyone moving forward, and I know Brandon, Matt, and their intention is that, so this may be a little bit longer of a process to get through that, but as far as the seeker goes, we're probably looking at a long-form seeker, and it's probably going to have environmental impacts through that process. What those questions and concerns will be are gonna be drawn out through that process.
Yeah, and then once we get, once we get into part one, we'll be able to kind of, you know, go through that, and in part two, we can decide, we can really, you know, drill down into what the, the, the items might need to be, uh, you know, looked at further, you know, through, you know, EIS or through scoping documents, but, um, if it even gets to that, um, it, it was my concern, is like, that would slow down the rest of the, the projects that Mr. Lewis would like to do. But it, you know, if the, if the gun range component is that important, then it obviously is, is part of the process.
Well, I would think in my meetings with Matt and with Brandon, that's their principal use, and I'm, am I correct in saying that, Brandon? I mean...
Well, that is the principal use, um, from the onset, but I'll be honest, I would, I would like to see the, the shooting range, uh, almost need to find another home, because the other uses are so popular. You know, that, that actually would be my, my dream, I, I would not, uh, be opposed to that in any way. The, the shooting range, again, uh, I don't wanna say it's a means to an end, but the, the shooting range is, is, is where our base is, that's where I have the most support. Uh, I do see the need for it, you know, I've, I've certainly believe in it, uh, and I do think the property is, is very well-suited, uh, for it, it's not perfect, but it's very well-suited for it. Uh, so I definitely see, you know, us getting a lot of, of support from our, our already, um, established customer base for that use. Uh, again, maybe to help us develop a better one down the road, uh, and some of these other uses can, can really take over uh, and use the property, I'd be completely.
Hey, are there any more questions?
I, I actually have a question, uh,
Yes.
You, you, Mr. Lang, you mentioned that there are other shooting ranges in the town of Batavia. Uh, how are those regulated? I mean, are they, because they've been around for forever, are they grandfathered in in some respect? Do they have a, a special use permit? I just, if I may, how are they regulated through the town?
What I've done is I've tried to look up, and, uh, to be honest with you, the, the one I'm gonna point out is over on Hopkins Road, and Kathy mentioned earlier, it's kind of in her backyard, um, that has been there, it's been there since before I was here. Um, I, I don't and can't find a record on if they went through that process out there and what special use permit, but I do know that they're, they're, they do the, the trap shooting is what they focus on. They also have the private membership, I could go there, you could go there, somebody could go there, and they could cite in a fifty cal. They could cite in a three oh eight, they could cite in a six point five, they could cite in uh, uh, pretty much whatever they want to, I mean, a two twenty-three, you belong to the club, you go there, you can shoot, but they're more focused on the trap shooting itself, so it's not as, uh, it's a, it's a set schedule, and I think, uh, a few of the planning board members brought that up, is, is they've always had that set schedule. We haven't gotten the complaints, because once again, like I said, before me and before people have moved there, that existed. Um, it's gone through that cycle already, this being a new proposal, obviously with a, a, a lot more involved in it, and, um, and some of the tactical stuff, and some of the trainings and whatnot, I think they're as important as anything. I'm glad you mentioned that early on, because that was one of the questions, is, you know, is this gonna turn into, or be, uh, bring your own, and I'm, I'm glad you recognized the fact of the importance of the training, number one. Um, but they've been there forever. Um, so would they in a sense be grandfathered? Yes. But we also haven't received any comments, complaints, because it's not a new hot topic, something new coming to Batavia, as to where you're proposing a multi-use outdoor recreation, um, which is new, so we're going through the, the initial process. But, uh, to sum it up, I think that's the best I can answer, is it's just been there forever.
Um, if I may, I think I re- I looked into joining that club on Hopkins myself at one point, and, um, from what I understand, um, you could go there basically any time of the day to shoot a, any firearm, be it a handgun or a rifle, if you're a member, like you can go there on a Tuesday at ten, you can go there on Wednesday at four. Um, but I think they schedule specific events, such as competitions or, or things like that on specific days. Is that correct?
You, you are right, they, uh, it's Thursday night and Sunday morning, but, uh, every now and then you hear a gun shooting out there, their target, or they're trying to get their, their guns right, but, um, not, not often. I've been here thirty-five years, and they were here before I was.
Yeah, and I think that kind of goes to the point here with Brandon, is that, um, even though they may be operating seven days a week, they won't be shooting twenty-four hours, you know, seven days. So, you know, sometimes you'll get that one-off guy that has a little bit of time during the day to go actually cite it in his rifle. And I think that's, you know, what Brandon wants to be able to provide to his members as well. You know, he doesn't wanna have to say, look, you can only go there on Thursday afternoons at three P M., and that's it.
Correct, yeah, I, I essentially want to, you know, to open a, a new private, you know, club. Uh, so that's why I was just curious, you know, if they, um, you know, kind of fell under, yeah, and again, I, I don't mean to, uh, you know, uh, cast, you know, whatever, uh, towards them, but it, you know, it would be a similar, um, I could join that club, I could get many of my friends to join it, uh, we could, you know, encourage membership in the club, we could grow that club to hundreds of people. I guess at that point, Dan, like you said, you might get complaints, and at that point, things might get initiated or whatever, uh, but it's, it's allowed for those clubs to do it, you know, now, um, without, and I, I will, again, I, I don't wanna disparage any, any of the, the local clubs, but I do just wanna highlight the different angle that we will be approaching this from. Uh, again, most of those clubs, there's generally not a safety class they have to take to join. It's generally, oh, you know Billy, like, oh, yeah, Billy's known him for forever, like, okay, you can join now, you know. Uh, they're generally very relaxed, uh, both in their, um, you know, qualifications. It's, uh, definitely a different approach than we will take, uh, a much more, uh, professional approach to, to the shooting clubs.
Steve Mountain, do you have anything to add?
No, I think, you know, Dan had really, you know, gone over the letter, and I think the main thing for everybody's benefit is to be with, uh, future submissions is to be as descriptive, um, as you possibly can at this time on operations and how things are controlled, you know, et cetera. I think the, you know, the concept site plan layout i- is good, um, but there's just so much more information that, that the planning board's gonna need in order to ultimately make a decision, so, I guess that's, you know, really all I have to offer, and, and I think, you know, any questions on the, uh, um, comment letter and all the detail, again, it, it looks pretty lengthy, but I think it's all the things that you've already thought of, you just need to get them in front of the planning board.
Yeah, the planning board has all seen that letter, I forwarded it to them. Are there any more questions from anyone? I don't see any hands up. Okay, well, Brandon, I have one more question, uh, about the drive-in, what size is that going to be? Is it going to be a big screen, like what we're familiar with? What exactly are you going to do?
Sure, so, again, we're gonna start small with it, um, a, a true movie, you know, if you were to open up a new theater, uh, extremely expensive, the, the projector alone, uh, is in the six-figure, uh, price tag range, uh, for a new, to show new release movies. So that would certainly be down the road, but, you know, we, we'll put up a, a, um, you know, larger than, say, I don't know if you've seen where you can buy like a little blow-up movie theater screen, like for your backyard. You know, it will certainly be larger than that, uh, but we intend on, like I said, starting small, growing it to, we do hope to have something in comparison to like the charcoal corral down in, down in Silver Lake. Uh, I don't know if we'll have multiple screens, again, it all depends on how, how popular it is, how much people enjoy it, uh, but, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Now, you know our next meeting will be the public hearing, uh, notices are going out tomorrow to the neighbors to, um, uh, it'll also be put in the, in the newspaper, so, um, be prepared for that. Um, we'll, we'll listen to the comments, positive or negative, and, uh, there won't be any decision made at that meeting, we would just listen to, to the comments. Okay, you understand that?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Uh, I guess, and then after, after that, I'm sure I will, uh, will be back, you know, for the next meeting, I would presume.
We'll move along as fast as you get the information to us. Okay, work with Dan, Dan Lang, and, and get us the information that they've requested, and we'll work as quickly as we can.
Sounds good.
Okay, and we're gonna go on with the rest of our meeting, unless there's any more questions.
Kathy, I just wanna add one thing, one last thing here. Um, just to let you know, the, the letters or the calls that we have received um, of individuals as well will be addressed, and I will present them at the public hearing, um, because that's gonna be the appropriate spot to do that, just to let you know from my standpoint that we do have some letters concerning this, as well as calls on this. So I just wanted to be upfront and let everybody know that, so.
Right, and, and I have already forwarded all my letters that I've gotten to the board members, and we will also note them at the public hearing, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Lewis, it was nice talking to you, and, um, and Mr. Hume. Thank you, we're gonna continue our meeting, you're welcome to stay, it's up to you. The next item on our agenda is a zoning enforcement officer report.
Yes, we've got, um, just to touch base quickly, and it's kind of a short report, but we've got two things that did go to the county. Um, Mr. Dickinson over at Dickinson's Auto is looking at putting up a uh, outdoor truck storage facility, more or less, um, to get all his vehicles out of the weather, to get other people's vehicles out of the weather, to clean up that site a little and get some of the, the vehicles out of there. He does need a variance prior to doing that, because of the location where he's at. He's going to be requesting on the, um, the side park, or the trailer, the trailer park is, on that side, he's gonna be requesting to be ten feet off of the lot line, um, instead of thirty feet off of the lot line. Right now, what he has there is he has a mass amount of vehicles, um, mass amount of disrepaired vehicles, some of his own trucks and equipment. Um, to be honest with you, I, if the variance goes through, I don't see any major issues with it. He does have a flood plain located within the corner of the back building, so we are requesting a base flood elevation certificate, so we can verify that everything that will be done will be in accordance with that if it falls into the flood plain. Um, so we have, we've required that as well. Um, some of you have probably read on social media, um, Chipotle is also submitted for going where the old Metro mattress is. They're looking at putting in, the reason they're going to the planning board is for a special use permit for their drive-through aspect of that. Um, that the design realistically, from what we've seen so far, is, is acceptable and everything looks good, but we've got more review to do in depth on the engineering side of that, and they've got some grease traps that we have to get sized appropriately and whatnot. But those who did go to the county, um, we're looking forward to, like I said, we're always open to, to business, a new business is coming. Um, we work with them the best we can, and those are the two that will be on the planning board throughout this next month. But, uh, other than that, I don't have anything else new and exciting to report, unless anybody has questions for me.
Questions, anyone? Okay, we'll go on to the chairman report, which I just wanna let you know, our next meeting will be for, uh, April twentieth, and at that time, we're going to deal with the Batavia Solar Project, which is next to the G C E D C and, um, off of College Road, or Holly, Holly Highway. And, um, we're gonna deal, deal with their seeker and with their special use permit. And also the, uh, Chipotle, we have to set a public hearing for them, because they're requesting a special use permit. So we will do that at our next meeting. Um, and that's all I have now, our next meeting will be on Zoom, we're not ready to go into the regular meetings again yet, so, uh, Sarah, you're gonna be busy, we're gonna do another public hearing, thank you. Uh, okay. Sharon, have you got anything for us? Sharon White?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, thank you for attending and listening to us. Yeah. Uh, anyone else have, have any comments?
Kathy?
Yes.
Don Partridge. Relative to one of the letters I received, uh, relative to, uh, Brandon's project, um, area fifty-one, I think I'd like to know when it's up for review, since it is on a special use permit, and I think we ought to review it.
Well, we usually bring them in once a year, we didn't last year because of COVID and so many people not doing activities, but, uh, we can, we can bring them in and let them talk about his upcoming season. I don't know that we wanna bring him in on the twentieth, we got a very big agenda, maybe the first meeting in May?
Well, I don't know when, now, relative to us and Dan, maybe you- Well, I don't know when, now, relative to us, Dan, maybe you can answer me, relative to special use permit, do we do it on their anniversary? Is that when you, we reveal them, or do you review them anytime?
We, we can review them anytime. Um, we can review them when there's a complaint, we can review them. Uh, there's not a, there's not a set standard or set date to do that, because it's a special use permit and ongoing. Um, what I can tell you is, because we've, uh, we have received a complaint, and because you've even brought it up, let me look down in our, our system as to when we did get the last updates. Let me look at what was approved for the time and everything, and I will get that information sent to Kathy. Kathy, if you would, just distribute it to everybody, it'll just be easy to go through you on that. But I'm going to put a note down here now, Don, to get all of that information to you, so we can, we can move forward and, and make sure that everything is right on that too, because uh, we did receive a letter in regards to the shooting range, which did mention Area 51. So by all means, because we're doing one and we already have a concern, w- we should look into that, and I will get you that information.
Okay, I think, I think we should, so.
Okay, well, we usually do do it once a year, so that would be good.
I was going to say, if you guys could forward, um, the information about Area 51 to Brandon and I, that would be really useful for us as we sort of go through and start creating a narrative in more details about his operations.
But I can definitely do that, Matt. I'll send it over to you.
Okay.
If that works.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else for this meeting? Is Brooks Holly still with us?
I'm still here on the phone, yes.
Okay, you can make the motion.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, oh, Paul Marquesi beat you to it, sorry, a second by Paul Marquesi. Uh, I'm sure there's no objections. Thank you very much, everyone. Good questions, good meeting, and, uh, be prepared for the public hearing. Thank you. Good night.
All right, have a great night. Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.